Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 2023, time is now 6:00 p.m. The regular meeting of the City Council sees Trinidad now come to order in Zoom by Zoom as well as in person, and welcome to everyone for being here tonight. Just go ahead and stand for the please, please.
Introduce the flag of the United States of America. And we are about it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Stabano.
Here.
Criego.
Here.
Oboltrin.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman. Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here.
A group will leave the agenda, council have any changes they would like to make? Your inand entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Stabano.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Oboltrin.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
I have three policy items and staff reports, a couple people. One, Mr. John Waite from the Sirius Golf Consulting, would you come forward, please?
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and introduce John. So, we did an RFP process in May and hired on Sirius Golf out of Georgia to come do an assessment of our golf course. And so, John is in town this week. We went out toward the course this morning and we're connecting him with people to talk about it, and then we'll get a final report on hopefully a good operation model for the course ongoing. But wanted to take the opportunity, since John's in town, to have him be introduced to you all, and certainly he can answer any questions that you have, and anything you want to say, John, would be helpful.
Yeah, thank for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity. First of all, let me say, this is one of the nicest places I have had the pleasure of working. I mean, this town is fantastic. I don't know why it hasn't grown enormously, but you've certainly got the assets, beautiful scenery, and that golf course that you have is certainly among the great assets that you have. It is a fantastic golf course. Well, let me put it this way, it has some potential to be fantastic. The scenery there, the layout is really outstanding. Usually when I start working with the municipality that I've worked with, others, the first question I ask of the city council is what is the mission statement for the golf course? And in 99% of the cases, they can't tell me, because nobody ever thinks about it that way. But it has an absolutely huge impact on how that course should be operated, how it should be funded, and certainly on my recommendations. And let me kind of give you some options as to what that is. In many cases, municipality sees a golf course as an amenity to its citizens, in which case, if it's treated as an amenity, it's like a park, or tennis courts, or pool. And so, when you're running it as an amenity, there's really no expectation for profitability. You don't expect a profit out of your parks, you don't expect a profit out of your tennis courts, why would you expect a profit out of your golf course? Because it's there to service the citizens. On the other extreme, we have cities that see the golf course as a cash cow. It's a way to provide funds to the city to support those other amenities. But to the degree that you are wanting profit as a, even if it's to just break even, to the degree that you want that, is a degree that that operation needs to be run as a business as opposed to a government entity, and those are completely offered into the spectrum, let me tell you. And so, it is very important to understand where we are and what we want out of that golf course. And those aren't the only two choices of. Golf courses can also be an economic driver, not just for it making money, but help other businesses in the area make money, bring in tourism, as especially would be in the case here, or an amenity to attract more tourists. It could be an icon, it could be, you know, I think when you had Cougar Canyon down the road here, it would have been an icon, it would have been something that the city would have been waving its flag, or should have been, trumpeting and Jack Nicklaus golf course, you know, so that can be another aspect of it. So what I'd like to get from you guys is some direction as to what you'd like to have out of this golf course, what would you like to see it be? Is it an amenity, or is it a profit center? Is it somewhere in between? Do you look at it as an economic driver for tourism? It certainly has that potential. It has a potential for all of those things, but it shapes my recommendations as to how to do that. So what I'd love to have you, and obviously I don't want to take up this meeting to go back and forth, but I've got a bunch of cards here, I'll leave that Steve, and I invite you to pick up a card and call me or email me, I'm in town through Friday, so, and you're my priority, so if you want to meet with me individually, or as pairs, or group, however, I'd love to do that, or you can email me, we can go back and forth that way, it doesn't matter, but your opinion does matter to me. You know, we're, I can't, you have to excuse my appearance, I was out on the golf course when the storm blew in, and I can personally verify that this course had gone to hail. Had to throw that in. But, you know, it is, you've just gotten started on this study, but I can already see a lot of potential. But to realize that potential is going to require the city to make some investments. And how much, and what direction, that's going to depend on your feedback. You know, you're going to need to, right now, that course appears to be in a death cycle, and this is, it's spiraling downward, and if corrective action isn't taken, you'll end up with a pasture, and it'd be doing nobody any good at that time. So some intervention is going to be required, even if you just want to keep it as an amenity. But to agree on how much of that intervention, that again goes back to what you view that golf course, what you want it to be for the city, and it'd be a lot of different things.
So, Mr. Mayor, yeah, thank you, John, and thank you, Mr. Mayor of City Council. We certainly don't want to do a discussion here tonight, but I will give these cards to you and encourage you to reach out to Mr. Waite if you have any thoughts or want to talk to him about the course.
Any quick questions?
You win, please.
Okay, thank you, John, appreciate it.
Anything else from, you Mr. Ruger?
No.
Okay. I do have one I'd like to talk about, that's the VA, it's an ArdoKade update, as you know, that ArdoKade has decided, actually waiting to leave Trinidad, they are not having their ArdoKade performance like they've had in the past years, and sorry to see that they're not having it this year. So I talked to Mr. Ruger about maybe something that we could do, I know that we are proposing to put a 3% sales tax, tourism additional sales tax on the ballot this year. But currently, I think in order to try to save ArdoKade, what I'd like to propose is that we take some money from the reserve funds that tourism has, and see if we can sustain them at least through the end of this year, and see where this 3% sales tax goes, if it materializes. What I would like to see is input an additional, now four, $300,000 to $500,000 into the coffers towards the next year, and what I would like, from my personal thought, is that if this additional 3% comes around, that we could fund or help fund two, at least two signature events per year, because signature events, as we see, can bring a lot of people into the community, and I just think it's worthwhile, and ArdoKade likes it, in the past has been one of them. So if we could, we're going to have a discussion about this, but I wanted to introduce that, that we bring it up, probably in a work session, and see where it goes from there, but that's the basics of it. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me?
I think that's a, that's a good thing, I think we need to keep it at least for the issue, see where it goes.
My only question is whether the board is desirous of doing it this year, because I understood that they were concluding their operations, so I don't know, just giving them money, is that a concern?
Well, what it would be is that, you know, being that this city council, you know, we are in control of all of the funds from tourism right now, so we can do that if we need to. Right, I just think that it would be something to try to salvage ArdoKade, because I sure hate to see them, and I think everyone here probably would hate to see that.
I do too. We just need to make sure that they're on board.
Well, we'll have to have a discussion, we'll have to have a discussion with the ArdoKade group, I'm not sure if you have time to talk to them or not.
Yeah, but you know, I think, Mayor, it would be a good idea if we moved to a work session to invite our friends from ArdoKade to come in and have that discussion transparently and open with them.
But anyway, thanks, and we'll move back to the work session. Eric, you have any questions on? On to add and for petitions or communications. I'm going to read this, I'm going to start reading this every, every two weeks when we have a regular agenda. Item one, kindly ensure all electronic devices, including cell phones, are either turned off or silent, in silent mode, and hats, please take them off, appreciate that. Item two, out of respect for all attendees, we request the removal of hats and other head coverings during the meeting unless required for religious or medical reasons. Item three, participants wishing to address the council are required to state their full legal name for the official record. Item four, please note the city council will not respond immediately to comments raised under petitions and communications, however, council or staff members will address and follow up on all inquiries as appropriate. Item five, we ask each speaker to maintain a respectful and courteous demeanor, refraining from personal attacks and use of foul or abusive language, a civil discourse is appreciated and expected at all times. Item six, we request all audience members to respect others' rights by not causing noise or disturbances that could potentially disrupt the post proceeding of the meeting. And that's pretty much it, so let's go ahead and get started. First person on board is Mr. Jeff Conchrin.
My name is Jeff Conchrin, who is the council. I'm a commissioner with the City of Trinidad. I received an email from our city attorney after he had received a call and a text from someone that I had a personal correspondence with, demanding my resignation from my commission. I then received, I did not resign, and then I received this email, which I feel to threaten. Hi there, Jeff, I still haven't received your letter of resignation, please know that if I don't have it by Friday morning, that matter will go to city council agenda for next week's meeting. So if you're going to resign, please see to it that I have it by then. I am confident that I would have this placed on the consent agenda, so there wouldn't be any need for discussion to accomplish your removal. Thank you. Bless down, city attorney. Don't believe that's proper procedure, stated that to Mr. Downs. So I'm here to petition for my rights as a commissioner of the City of Trinidad Municipal Code, Chapter 12, Article 17, lines 124. I'd like to have a hearing about this before I'm put on a consent agenda and removed without my ability to, I don't think it's the city attorney's right to be judge, jury, and executioner of all at once.
Mr. Pat Hollis?
My name's Pat Hollis, mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney, staff. Thanks for the opportunity. To ensure efficiency, I'm going to go ahead and read the statement. I try to really closely follow what the city is doing, and I'm reading all of the agendas that come out, just see what's there. I'm here about item five C in the consent agenda section. It was my hope that someone from the council would have objected to this during the approval of the agenda section. My greater hope was that the city attorney would have advised against the violation of a very important area of our municipal code. Chapter two, Article 17, Code of Ethics, Section 271. This process is in place to provide a fair way to air ethics grievances and does not contain two different sets of rules for those elected from those appointed. The council has recently experienced in this area of our code, and we need to do better. This Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics applies to all boards and commissions of the City of Trinidad. Members of all boards or commissions shall be afforded the same due process rights and protections provided by it. There aren't two processes in our code. Also, city council does not rule on these. You need to seat a Board of Ethics, and the distinction between the Board of Ethics and the city council is that the latter convenes the former. It states, city council shall, at its next regularly scheduled meeting, greater than seven working days after the complaint in ethics is filed, convene as a Board of Ethics, and you've done that before, so we know the process. It does not allow for the placement of such an important matter to be listed as a consent agenda item by the city attorney to be voted on without due process. It also states, if allegations are denied in whole or in part, the matter shall be set for a hearing outside the 30 days from the date of the complaint is first read and presented to the respondent. You see, we give respondents certain rights, and I refer you all to Section 4B. It simply is not the city attorney's job to decide to use an expedited process or provide a punishment for an unproven violation. The code is quite clear, and again, has been followed by the city council recently, and again, you all know this process. My main concern is this type of backdoor treatment of a subordinate board or commission members creates a very slippery slope and calls into question areas of trust and there being two sets of rules when the code provides only one. It also could make recruiting of community members to serve on subordinate boards much more difficult than it currently is. I was the one who recruited Mr. Conchrin. He has been a valued member of Tora, he brings great ideas, energy, and a willingness to do the work. It is my hope that the ethics board, when seated, will do as they have done for what some might consider more egregious ethics violations, especially since this is a member of our community, new to such things, and I will add that you have just displayed on this agenda an error that members of the council or the board, even knowing the rules, sometimes violate them. As you know, there are remedies for this, and they should be considered before removal. Issue a public warning, verbal or written. Issue a public rep command or censor, verbal or written. Issue a written public admonishment, and all of these provide a learning opportunity for current and future board members. Please follow Chapter two, Article 17, Code of Ethics, Section 271, and the codified process, and consider the available punishments, something you took advantage of in the past. I look forward to your correction to the upcoming item five with a consent agenda approval and for upholding due process. Thank you.
Sir, is one checked, correct?
Sorry, I wanted to have something prepared, I'm just a little bothered. Anyways, I don't know if you remember, I was here about a month ago complaining about gratuitous Satanism and cannibalism and murder on city websites. Fortunately, you have all taken that down, so thank you very much. Thank you very much for taking that off of the website, because it was really egregious and disgusting, really, to force the citizens of Trinidad to see that on their Facebook feed. Indeed, the owner of the bar took that off their own website, so they must somehow agree. So thank you very much. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of hot air going around since then, I don't know if you've been following it, and involved in whatever. The Chronicle News has written three front page papers since then about middle old me, full of a bunch of lies, I have to say, you know, saying that I had at once saying that I have a fake name. My name is not fake, Seraphim is not a fake name, I baptized Seraphim. I think the fake name might be Chronicle News. Also, Mr. Mandial, Mandial, I don't know his name, has said that I had been handing out flyers, I don't remember handing anyone a flyer that day, except I gave him a copy of my notes on the way out, which I had two of them, I had two copies of my notes, he got one of them. Somehow, Wally Wallace, which is a fake name, by the way, posted that copy that I gave him the very next day on Facebook for billions of people to see. So if anyone is worried about handing out flyers, go to the Chronicle News, they pass that on, it was not me. So I have every right to, you know, have notes up here, which I don't tonight. Anyways, don't want to tear open old wounds, I'm not here about that today. You know, I don't care about what all these people say about me, all these little Satanists run around and talk stuff about me, I don't care, you know. I do draw the line when the City of Trinidad uses their websites to put me, my personal property, in harm. Mr. Ruger? My name and address has been doxxed since then, since June 13th, my name and address, I just went and looked on my way over, and my name and address is still up there for the purpose of harassment. Does the city manager not have some fiduciary duty at all to the citizens of Trinidad not to put them in harm? Am I not allowed to come up here and state my case against murder and cannibalism without me being put in harm by the City of Trinidad? I also have to say, the person who wrote my name, Corey Howlett, was the same person, a known convicted terrorist who sprayed little kids last year at the Fourth of July party, is partnering with the City of Trinidad. I have four or five times tried to contact the communications director?
One minute left, sir.
I have not gotten response from anyone. It's up there right now, my name and address. I'll give you all a chance to respond.
Like I mentioned, there's no response, obviously, in the council, and I won't mind leaving the statement. Right.
Well, I am not here to talk, you know, about details right now, I'm here to demand an apology from the City of Trinidad for putting me in danger, for coming up here to express my concern, and you doxxed me, you all doxxed me. Someone needs to answer for this, it's not acceptable. What are you telling the citizens of Trinidad?
That's what you told him, sir.
Okay, we'll call up the next person? Jason Decker?
Mayor, council members, I come today with a lot of questions for you, and I look forward to your response at a later date. I understand there are rules set in place to protect city employees from negative comments on this platform, is that correct? On June 6th, you led a person with a fake document defame my family and my business. The mayor, council members Williamson, Shu, and Debano all broke the quorum to agree with the accuser about how my wife should be terminated from her role with the city. You all certainly had a lot to say that day, although now, you do, you all know that Keely did nothing wrong in this situation, and a month later, no one has managed to speak up yet. Why has no one said a word on this? Are you hoping to brush this under the rug and hope the mistake will go away? Do you not believe the rules of this council and the oath you took to the citizens of Trinidad apply to you? Did you break the rules so badly, you left yourselves legally liable and think an apology will open yourself up for a lawsuit? Aaron Williamson, when you broke the quorum to speak with the accuser in the hallway, what did you talk about? Did you have a previous relationship with this individual? Did you ask him to come forward to these accusations? Did you work with other members of the city council or city employees to attempt to have Keely Williamson from her position at the city? At the last meeting, there was a statement or apology that was on the city council meeting agenda, yet was removed at the beginning. Why was this removed? Why have we not heard this statement yet? Did all members of the city council agree to this statement, and if not, what members did not agree to this statement? In the last city council meeting, I spoke about the Trinidad Mafia, a local group of organized gangsters who work in the shadows, and when they decide it's time for someone to go, they use their positions of power to ruin your life in any way possible. These mafia members work in city positions, anonymous community members, and have council members get involved as well. We've seen several city managers, our previous city planner, and economic development manager, as well as entrepreneurs in Trinidad who were here to rehabilitize old buildings and turn them into jobs for citizens and tax revenue for the city. People that had city positions were fired, harassed, threatened, mocked, discriminated, some resigned from their positions due to this harassment of their family. And some entrepreneurs now refuse to invest in Trinidad anymore because of the treatment they got from the mafia and members of city council. Seems like all the biggest problems in Trinidad can be traced back to the same people.
Please refrain from calling the council mafia, because there's nothing to that that I'd like for you to prove it.
Okay. Okay. As a member of the Lodging and Tax Advisory Board, I received access to a study showing tourism is down 12% from 2019, even though there is a brand new state park and countless new businesses, restaurants, and more to engage our visitors and entertain visitors to Trinidad. Speaking with local business owners, most are seeing a huge downturn in seasonal business this summer. Many are down 20 to 5 to 40% over last year, and we have also seen Trinidad's top attraction, the Art Cartopia Museum, announce they were closing their doors, as well as the festival they provide every year. This is a very sad day for citizens of Trinidad and beyond. Was closing their doors a more attractive option than attempting to work with some city employees who actively obstruct the arts and discriminate against some members of the community?
One minute, sir.
I'm also on the board for the Second Annual Trinidad Art Festival, an event that we were expecting over 1,000 people this year, and we had 600 people this year. I encourage all of you to attend, it's next weekend at Sister Blindian Park. Trinidad Art Festival received a tourism grant for this event, however, our grant check was mailed to a Pablo address. Was this an intentional microaggression or an honest mistake? We've also spent nearly six months working on a road closure for this event with the event coordinator, and one week before the festival, we have still not received it. This is a very simple action. This is a very simple action. Is it another obstruction for an event based on who the organizers are or just another coincidence? I have many more stories that five minutes does not allow me to share. I believe that there needs to be some significant changes in the way that some community members are treated in the city, or we will continue to see attractions, attractions close, businesses deceased, and city revenue will decrease. I'll see you at the next city council meeting.
Carlos Lopez.
Hello, my name is Carlos Lopez. Thank you, council, city staff. I come up here before to discuss the municipal code, Chapter 2, or the statute issue, which Mr. Halick went into the details specifically about, for the due process for the removal of a board or commission member. I went through the code, and I was quite intrigued to find out that, you know, all of us, and I'm a board member for the city, you all are board members technically, and we all have to stand up to and adhere to these Code of Ethics or these bylaws that we have set in place in the municipal code. But when I try to look up areas for city staff, there's nothing like that. There's not a section of Code of Ethics or Code of Conduct, and that really is concerning for me, because if we have concerns as a board member, according to the code, I can't go and make a comment to criticize someone that's in the city. I wonder why. I don't know when this code was written, this particular section, or who it was written by. I may have even been on the dais up there with you guys when it was actually approved. I don't remember that. But the thing is, it was approved by a council, and I have concerns about it, because when we have these issues arising where due process should be given, because I looked at the agenda items before, and I haven't seen anything, unless it was a, you know, executive session where avoidance of legal liability was the predicate for that particular executive session that you all had pertaining to Mr. Cochran's removal right now in the consent agenda. Well, I get it, you guys had your executive sessions, legal advice is given, discussions are made, but at the same token, due process should be given, and according to the municipal code, that is part of our due process. I mean, this is democracy. We should be able to go forward and say, you know, that complaint is not warranted. And I'm not here to defend any actions by any members. Please don't take it by that way. If there was an egregious, you know, thing done, then by all means, handle it the way that you need to handle it, but do it the right way according to the municipal code. I remember when I sat right there, and we were having conversations about how well we knew or didn't know the charter, and Mr. Mate, who sat right there, would discuss these things, and we would have kind of like know-your-charter kind of meetings beforehand, little quizzes sometimes that he would bring up, because we, and I say we, because I was with us, we sometimes had flubs. We're human, you know? We have other lives, we have other jobs, we do other things. This is a part-time position, and it is part-time because it's only for two to four years, depending on your elected cycle. But yet, we still have to take it serious, and with that being said, the municipal code is tethered to our charter, and we need to stick with those bylaws in order to ensure that if I go off and do something, am I going to be next on this consent agenda for removal from ARPA? Could this be you, Ms. Oboltry, for something? But yet, there's a different mechanism for city council. There's recalls and things like that. But yet, for other board members who are volunteers, truly volunteers, trying to help our community, and someone comes forward with a complaint, whether it's warranted or not, they're still allowed due process. And I implore upon you to please do this, because right now, when city staff gives you your agenda and it's placed on there without any knowledge from previous meetings about you guys putting your Board of Ethics together in order to go through the due process, that looks like you guys are making deals behind closed doors. It may not be, but that's how the proceeding is from our end over here. So, with that being said, I implore upon you to make an amendment and a motion right now after the last speaker is done, to give him his due process. If he did something terrible, by all means, do what you gotta do, but if not, at least give him the process to be a respondent as it is listed in the municipal code.
One minute.
That's on my God. I hope that you all do the right thing. Eyes are on you all right now to do the right thing for everyone else. Thank you.
I was having a letter here from Ms. Teresa Larson, who had an unfortunate situation here in Trinidad, and if you're filed. Says, ladies and gentlemen, my husband and I recently passed through Trinidad and spent the night. We were shocked and dismayed at the number of pot shops at Langier Streets and the highway. We couldn't get out of town fast enough before we were hit by someone who was high and driving. Obviously, in sadly, selling drugs appears to be our main source of commerce. Although Trinidad appears to be a nice little town, I certainly wouldn't want to raise a child there. The majority of the country feels that Colorado has gone down the tubes in recent, in recent years, and there's no evidence, there's nothing, and this is no more evident than in Trinidad. Just thought you might appreciate an outsider's perspective. Sincerely, Teresa Larson. Just wanted to read that to you. And I'd like to take a quick recess. Mr. Captain?
Sure.
On to item five, consent agenda approval. Item 5A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 30th, 2023, special meetings of, special meeting minutes of June 23, 2023. Item B, approval of special events permit application, vault, venue, subspirituous, followed by Trinidad and Los Angeles County Chamber of Commerce for July the 7th, 2023, at 210 and 218 West Main Streets, space to create commons. Ms. Rosetti, are you here tonight? Thank you for being here. Item C, removal of Jeff Cochran from the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority Board. Item D, approval of the bills in the amount of $1,701,035.16. Item E, approval of payroll, July 24th, 2023 through July the 7th, 2023, in the amount Take a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we have adjourned to an executive session before we proceed on deconsention for the purpose of receiving legal advice.
Can we do that?
There was no executive session listed on the agenda for purposes of discussing this.
Respectfully, when I was at the CML conference recently, I talked with the attorney who has written the rules of order for Colorado municipalities, and I asked him that question, and he said, you don't always know when you're going to need an executive session, so it's permissible, I mean, it's permissible to request one even if it's not listed.
Okay, I'm happy to do that if council votes to have an executive session. Happy to confirm.
Now is your motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Tobono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Schu?
Yep.
Blainson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Okay, you would need, yeah?
For the purpose of receiving a court box.
Okay, let's go ahead and slide back to the chambers.
Okay, the time is now 7:03 PM and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were?
Aaron Williamson.
Aaron Ogletree.
Neil Rico.
Franciu.
Karen Griego.
Eli DeWong.
Les Goines.
Steve Lee Root. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concern for the record. Hearing now, the next agenda item is consent of the agenda approval as read. Entertained a motion? So moved. Need a second?
Second.
Come roll, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Item six, public carrying transfer of ownership with tavern liquor license by Sexy Pizza 5. LLC doing business as Sexy Pizza 516 East Elm Street, formerly Fox and Nemo's LLC doing business as Grandma's House. Here it is now open. Would you please swear them in?
I won't be testifying.
He's the lawyer.
Yes.
Okay, I guess, state your name, please.
Kyle Peters.
Kyle Peters.
And Austin Gill on behalf of Sexy Pizza.
Okay? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This matter comes before you on transfer of ownership. But I want to begin by saying that I represented a council earlier in the day. My belief it would be okay to only have Mr. Peters here. That is, as a second owner, but I said as long as you have one owner, a legal counsel, that should be fine. So, based on the application, Mayor and councilmembers that you all have, the standard here for transfer of ownership is age of the applicant and also moral character. And I submit that both of those have been met by the application of the documents contained therein. And so I think the burden has been at least initially met.
If you have any questions of them? Any questions from?
I don't have a question.
Do you have any comments you would like to make?
Do you mind just giving them a little concept of how long you've been in the town?
Absolutely. I'm Kyle Peters, Director of Operations of Sexy Pizza at all five Sexy Pizza locations, including one here in Trinidad. Trinidad is our fifth location and we opened up October 21st, 2021, which I think was our first date of business here in Trinidad. Just very happy to be down here, love being part of the community. Gives me an opportunity to get out of the city and come down here and experience the city of Trinidad and all the cool things that are around this town. We've been in business for over 15 years with our original location, starting in Denver. We've got over 100 team members that we value, some of which obviously are community members down here in Trinidad. So, yeah, just happy to be a part of the community down here.
Okay, any additional comment?
That's a sum to a perfect.
Okay. Anyone in the audience or listening in wants to speak for or against the transfer of the ownership? Hearing done. Here it is now closed. Entertained a motion for the transfer of ownership of tavern liquor license filed by Sexy Pizza 5. LLC doing business as Sexy Pizza 516 East Elm Street, formerly Fox and Nemo's. LLC doing business as Grandma's House. Is entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Callvo, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you, Jake Bond. Thank you, Mark.
Absolutely, I will do. I think he's listening in, so I think that you probably just thanked him.
Okay, item 6B, transfer of ownership of tavern liquor license filed by Al Rantua Restaurant LLC at 1901 Santa Fe Trail. Formerly Gina Juon, doing business as Al Rantua Restaurant. Here it is now open. Gina and Francisco Young, come forward, please. Swear them in, please.
Do you guys really feel right now, do you swear in front of the testimony about to give us the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't look so nervous, Frank.
Try not.
Les?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. And she has a Trinidad Traders T-shirt on, so that's presumptive validity right there. Mayor and councilmember of similar situation here as well, that is, this is also a transfer of ownership. And they, I do believe, made the prima facie show, have made a prima facie showing of validity for their application.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, so you're kind of nervous about that? Anyone in, uh, in house or, uh, online wants to speak for or against the transfer of, uh, ownership of this license? Hearing none. Hearing is now closed. Entertained a motion for transfer of ownership of tavern liquor license filed by Al Rantcho Restaurant LLC at nineteen oh one Santa Fe Trail, formerly Gina Luhman, doing business as Al Rantcho Restaurant. So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes, congratulations. Make a hand, make a hand.
Thank you very much.
Item six C, public carrying for consideration of ordinance authorizing a property exchange and a separate purchase of certain rural property owned by the City of Trinidad to OK Ranch and from OK Ranch to the City of Trinidad. Hearing is now open. Mr. Root.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading of, um, our, our ordinance authorizing the, uh, purchase and transfer, um, for the OSLA property as its colloquial known.
Co- colloquially known.
Uh, again, very excited about, uh, this opportunity to expand our outdoor recreation and, uh, I think great things are going to come from this. Certainly answer any questions you all have.
Questions?
No questions, just beautiful piece of work.
Just have one question. Um, is the transfer or going to, um, set any limitations on our use of the property?
Not that I know of, no. Uh, in fact, that's a terrific question. We've already, um, had conversations with, um, the neighbor, uh, to the property as well and, uh, certainly want to make sure that we're friendly neighbors and keep them moving. So I think we're going to have a great relationship with all involved.
Thank you.
Aaron, you have any questions?
I have no questions.
And he is correct and he said, I've had a couple of conversations with Floyd Duran, he's the park ranger and just had some conversations about me being able to work with him down the road because that property, as you well have seen, uh, it's like, it does join the state park. And there is a, uh, a trail, I think within like twenty-five feet that they have of this property. So, uh, just for the people who are in-house and people are listening in, uh, this is approximately two hundred and eighty or two hundred and eighty-eight acres, uh, which is adjacent to, or right next to the Trinidad Lake State Park, beautiful area, uh, which will be used for, uh, expanding our recreational opportunities, uh, for the city of Trinidad. And, uh, as we, you know, that's something that we aspire to do, uh, to have greater opportunities for recreation. So I think this fits within that. So I'd like to, I just have to develop it, develop it, probably, just like to go choose. And like I said, part of it is an actual exchange and part of it is a purchase.
Yep.
Anyone, uh, listening in have any comments? On Zoom as well? Hearing done. Hearing is now closed. Second reading of ordinance authorizing a property exchange and a separate purchase of certain rural property owned by the City of Trinidad to OK Ranch and from OK Ranch to the City of Trinidad. Entertained a motion. So moved. Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item seven and fifty business, we have none. Item eight, Miss Lane's business, consideration purchase of one, twenty twenty-three Ford F five fifty crew cab and chassis with a gas department. Entertained a motion for seventy-two thousand, thirty-three hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Need a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Mr. Crowe.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, I'm here to ask for the consideration of a purchase of the F five fifty pickup truck. Um, it'll be put on our fleet as the welding truck. Currently, we have a welding truck right now. It's a two thousand and eight, um, with all the new equipment we've been getting in, it's a little overloaded as far as weight capacity right now. So I'm looking for just a more stout truck, which is a five fifty. Um, we're having trouble getting it. I've been looking for one from, since January, it's been in the budget and can't find one. Um, I've found some of them, I can't hold them, um, can't really even get prices on them, but they're getting sold as soon as I find out they have them. So I've reached out to many different suppliers, um, dealerships, the Provo Ford dealership, Phil on Toyota found one, it was sold the next day before I could even act on that one. Um, Phil on To- uh, Ford here in Trinidad found me one, it was sold the next day. And at home found one and it was sold. So I have one now that Loveland Ford called me, they have one, um, so I'm trying to act as fast as I can. This one would be in supposedly the end of the month. So right now it's kind of, hasn't been put out that anybody could get it, so I'm trying to feel the first one in line to get this.
So we hear your approval, you'll leave and you call?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I will do that, yeah. So, um, we usually purchase from our state program, which is unable to get this because they've stopped, uh, purchase, uh, delivering these to fleet programs now for this year. So, uh, just asking if we could go ahead and purchase this truck that I found for seventy-three thousand. And they might work on the price, that's the ballpark price that they're really, they said he might be able to come down on that price. Okay. They will deliver it.
Any questions, Mr. Crowe? Steve, are you going to retire the old, the, uh, two thousand and eight welding truck?
No, that one will not be retired. We're going to use that one. Uh, we're going to kind of switch some trucks around. Uh, the truck that's going to be retired is going to be a two thousand and eight F two fifty, uh, service body truck. And that's the one that's going to be, we're going to shuffle a few trucks around and still use that two thousand and eight welder truck that we have right now. I just want to have all the equipment and the welder on there.
Okay.
So we're going to transfer the welder and stuff all to this new one. Uh, we're going to, it's, it's a cabin chassis, we're going to custom make the box for it. Um, the budgeted a hundred and ten thousand for the truck and the box. So I've been checking with a few companies that can build a box and we made do it in-house. And we're looking at about twenty thousand for the box.
Okay.
For the bed on that. So it'll still be the one, budgeted price of a little pickup on that.
Did I hear you correctly? We're going to make the box here in?
Yeah, the, yeah, the gas department, some of our welders and stuff, we've been fabricating some things and they're thinking if we have the time to do it, we'll do it. If not, we're going to have to go out. But yeah.
What's the difference in price between, is it a lot more expensive to buy it?
Um, it's probably going to be about eight to ten thousand dollars difference to buy it and have one fabricated.
And now is it easy to get ahold of as well?
Um, yeah, those aren't bad.
Okay.
And then I talked with Loveland and they could probably get a discounted price. They work with some companies. I've reached out to Naphide and, uh, Coys and they make custom beds. They gave me, over the phone conversation, a price of about twenty to twenty-five thousand. And then we looked at material to build our own, of course, that's not considering our time and stuff.
Right.
Material's going to run about ten, twelve thousand.
Okay.
Do you build that?
No. Yes.
I have no questions.
No questions? Now, you're going to, uh, move the equipment over to this new vehicle? Most of it, I guess?
Most of it will be moved over to this.
Okay, now, are you going to need some additional equipment from the old piece after moving the door?
No. We're just kind of shuffling things around, um, from truck to truck and moving one of the older trucks that has a hundred and fifty thousand miles out of the fleet, moving on to the utility bed truck down and then the welder truck down to be in a flatbed.
And that was maybe my question that you answered about, uh, additional cost, uh, update, but you're going to talk, talk about the box and moving stuff?
The box and that, everything, everything that we're going to purchase will be for the new truck.
So you did tell me that you had your question.
We won't need any purchases for the trucks we shuffle around.
Good, thank you very much. Yeah, good. Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, any further questions? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Close to reports. Well, there's two veteran events that are going to take place. One is July nineteenth and one is July twenty-seventh at the Champions Building on Commercial Street. The July nineteenth event pertains to caregiver support for veterans and their families. And, uh, the July twenty-seventh event focuses on, focuses on financial advisement. The second event is open to everyone, not just veterans and their families, so, but there's a max of, of forty, uh, for each event, so that's going to happen in a couple of weeks. Gary?
Nothing really to report except that I did get a few calls today, uh, commending the city on our works displayed last night.
You were nice, yeah.
Yeah, I got two, two calls. I usually don't get calls, but those were pleasant ones.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I don't have, we're, uh, working on a couple of projects for ARCA, but I can't give any information out yet, so.
Okay.
Well, you kind of have an idea of what's going on. So as soon as we get some more developed, we'll bring it out.
Good. Aaron?
I got to go to the Colorado Municipal League Conference with the mayor and, um, city manager over the last weekend and extended four days. And it was really a worthwhile time. Um, I got to understand a lot more about what that organization does and why it exists. And basically it's there to, um, do advocacy and educate, education and training for elected officials and for staff and administrations. And it's very helpful. The best part of it, I think, is that you get to sit down with people all over the state and hear what's going on in their communities. And it helps you to, to see that, you know, what you're dealing with is what a lot of people are dealing with. I went to several, uh, events related to homelessness and the things that people have been doing throughout the state, including Aurora. Took a tour of Aurora and all of its various, um, solutions, uh, on a continuum from people who are just directly off the street to people who are, um, veterans who have permanent, now are being given permanent housing, uh, through grant money that they were able to put together in a really nice facility. And so it was, I think, the thing that I learned in that, um, in all of those, in that context, is that anything that communities do regarding homelessness has to be a collaborative effort, um, among everyone in the community who's interested in that issue, including ministries, including cities, including social agencies, so that there, everything that you have can be leveraged to help. And also that I learned that it's really good for us to know as a community what other communities are doing because some people who stop here also go on to other places and we can say, when you go to Canyon City, they have a place that they might take you in. And so I thought that was all very, very helpful. I went to, um, a meeting, as I mentioned before, on, um, Bob's Rules of Order. Robert Widmer is, uh, a long time, thirty-year municipal lawyer who has taken Robert's Rules of Order and, um, condensed them down, made them much easier to follow for Colorado municipalities. And he has a book now that he's going to send to city managers and to all elected officials electronically that lays this all out and they're readily, um, amendable for your own purposes, but it's really helpful and I think we would be well served to look at those and I just consider taking them on. Um, and I can't remember the last name. Um, oh, and media messaging. I went and went to a, a program on how cities deal with social media and that was very instructive. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm very excited about something that Marty Hackett sent us, uh, a notice about. There's some training coming for people who are in the service industry to get what, a one-day training that's, uh, certified guest ser- I'm sorry, certified guest service gold professional certificate. They can get it in one day and it makes them more hirable, it makes them more, um, uh, promotable and it helps them to understand the purpose of, of customer service and how it can transform a business. And that is happening on July seventeenth at Space Crane and the registration is July thirteenth deadline.
How are they getting the word out to the businesses, too?
I, I've just, I just saw it on, I put it on social media, I'm sure it's on our city website.
Do you know how, how they're getting that?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, we've done direct contact with all the businesses as well.
That's all I have.
Gary?
Mayor, I have a, uh, South Central Council of Governments coming up, um, shortly, so I'll have someone to report on after that. I did want to mention, um, I've spoken to quite a few constituents that have, um, observed meetings lately and, and this theme has come up several times. Um, people made observation that they, um, feel meetings, and this statement was said twice, um, meetings were canned, that, uh, people's decisions were made ahead of time. Um, and I, I think my response to them is accurate. Um, unless you look at, uh, city government, city council through the whole spectrum, that is, um, city council meetings plus work sessions, it may really appear that way. So, um, I did mention to them, uh, if you want to take part in city government, it's important to observe the whole, um, continuum of meetings because, you know, that's where the ideas are presented, fleshed out and discussed and they come here to be implemented, unless it's a hearing, obviously. Um, that being said, I'm just, uh, in, and, and two people I spoke to actually said, yeah, but, um, work sessions are not open to the public. So work sessions are absolutely open to the public. I just, um, encourage people to come be part of their local government and, um, appreciate the, um, transparency in that. Um, that's all I have.
No, thank you for explaining to those people that think that way. Uh, I've had a, one or two people kind of saying they asked the same question about, uh, conducting business and, uh, making decisions. Kind of goes the order. We don't. It's all done through, uh, work sessions and, uh, that, that's just, we, we have to conduct business because that is a transparency issue. And, uh, so that, that's what we have to do.
Well, Dan adding on to it, Aaron said, you know, we get these, this information well in advance of these meetings and we study them and if we have questions, staff is always there to answer questions. Explanations.
My, myself, you know, uh, prior to any work session, prior to any city council, regular meeting, uh, you know, I do take the time to go over all of the information that's provided. If I, if I have any questions, I'll call Les or I'll call the city manager and, uh, you know, get, get my answers. And, uh, that's just, uh, that's the proper way to do things. Um, just like, uh, Ms. Ogletree, uh, I attended that meeting and I attended some of the same meetings that she did, so I'm not going to go over those. But one of the things that I will say is that it gives, like for me, I've been here seven and a half years and it gave me an opportunity to connect with, uh, some of the other mayors and people that I've met along the way. And just have a discussion with them of how things are going in their municipalities and, uh, they're all facing similar issues, uh, nothing, nothing different, uh, you know, a lot of issues at the same time. Um, one that was different that they were not able to attend, they have a specific, uh, meeting for mayors. And this is a, a meeting where the mayors can sit and there were probably, probably about thirty-five or forty mayors in that room. And basically we were able to sit there and, and, and talk about things and issues and if we wanted to complain about them or if we wanted to bitch about them or whatever, you know, and you hear some of the, how to, they resolve some of their issues. And, uh, so it was, it was interesting. It's just a good time, it's a good thing to be able to sit and listen to the other mayors as to what is going on in their municipalities, so. Uh, the one thing that I thought was really interesting, and I think Steve and, uh, Aaron here, uh, they had two speakers at, at different dinners, uh, very inspirational. They, you know, one thing that you walk away from these meetings, I've, I've been to them before, and they always have some people that come forward at, uh, some of the main dinners and, uh, the speakers, the guest speakers that they have, uh, very inspirational. And you walk away feeling like, you know, maybe we're not all that good, but we're not all that bad either. You know, but, uh, it's, it's, they, they make a lot of things and know that's what's kind of, that's what I really enjoy. I attended the, and I think you did too, the Emergent Campus Meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Uh, that was brought, uh, to the City of Trinidad by, uh, Rock Repper. Ended at the Space, the Space Crane, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And what that is, is a company, uh, that is out of Canyon City. And the purpose of, of them is to try and bring the tech industry or tech people into the community. And, uh, right now, from what I gathered is that, uh, in Canyon City, they've kind of overgrown what they're able to do. And they would like to, uh, position something here in Trinidad. And it would be, it would be great because then not only the, the college can, uh, participate in that, uh, although the college, I think they are going to, they do have to apply for some funding. And that is in September, I believe. So I, I told Rhonda that, uh, if she needed any kind of support from us, please let us know and, uh, we'd be more than happy to. And we'd be more than happy to support your endeavor. And then after that, if all goes through, they'll break somebody down. They've already had some agreement with the school district, the Park Street School, that they could house that business in there. And what's interesting is some of these businesses that they have already in Canyon City, there's an office there, but they're all over the country. So it's just not that their business is located there, but they have businesses that have several hundred employees all over the place.
And they're choosing.
And they're choosing.
Locate there.
Exactly. So that's something that I think that we, I think we can benefit very well. One of the big things, of course, and we do have that capability now, is good internet services and that's one thing that they would require. Anyway, this, that was a great thing. Do you have any better?
I think it was a great presentation and I think it would be really good for the kids of Trinidad to have this opportunity to learn tech skills because that is what they're going to need as they progress into their jobs. And then I meant to mention at the conference also Keely was present. I was glad that Keely Williamson was able to be there.
Also, Mr. Mayor, in fact, Ms. Ogletree and I met with Luis Lopez last week concerning the Pinho Canyon. We had a good discussion. There's a discussion going on about the pipeline down there and we'll have some more discussion from the council coming forward here soon. Want to say that the July fourth parade yesterday was tremendous. I had never seen, I don't think, that many people out on the streets during the parade. It was terrific. And the participation, Biden got sprayed once and that's, I was at this end and it was already getting kind of warm. It was kind, but it felt good, you know?
That's your coming sphere.
There you go. The last thing I wanted to mention and ask, and I'm not sure if that would be either Mr. Ruder or if that would be even Adra. As we know that Floyd Joe's, I think, is closed, do we have to take any action if she has received her liquor license? Is that something that we need to consider?
We don't have to rescind, and I might want to defer on Adra on that. I don't, we don't have to take any action. I, she's not acting on her liquor license. I, I would say if a person has a valid liquor license and they stop operations for a while, they can resume operations insofar as their license would still be valid.
Okay.
However, if it came up to a renewal period and they didn't renew, then they'd have a problem. But if they have a liquor license, they can operate, not operate, then operate again. Do you agree, Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Hallelujah. I hate it when she says, strike everything you just said.
Thanks for the answer.
You bet.
Mr. Ruder.
Just a couple of quick things. So I wanted to first and foremost thank our fire department, our community center and regional and state assistance for fighting the Titan Fire that we recently had in our community. I think quick action really saved a lot of homes and then getting into a worse situation than it could have been. So I just wanted to thank, thank those people for that. As you know, our golf consultant is here this week, so you met John. I have his cards. And so if anyone wants to reach out and have a conversation, that's absolutely appropriate. We'll make those connections. And then I'm also really proud to announce that we received two outstanding proposals for our strategic planning RFP. And so those came in recently. They're with the evaluation committee right now and we're hoping to bring a contract award to you all. Hopefully the next council meeting to move forward with that process.
Okay. You know, I just wanted to, you know, tag on to what you said, your first comment about, you know, how our fire department and our people in the community, how we reach out, you know, in the time of need. It's not the first time this has happened. We've done this other times too, that, and not only our city itself, the city itself, you know, our employees, but other community members, other community organizations have participated in them. I know that when they had that big one, the Spring Fire a couple of years ago, and other people actually gave money to that organization because of what happened up there. So we are very generous in this community to reach out to try to help people. So, we should not.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The only item I want to mention to you and to the public is that if anyone has any questions about what was done under item five C on the consent agenda, they can do a court request and I would invite them to do that if they have any questions. And that is all I have. Thank you.
That being said, in motion to adjourn. So move. Okay, don't want to go over. Second?
I'm ready.
Second. Call roll please. No, we got, we got one more. Sorry about that. We got an executive session.
We're not agreeing quite yet.
Yeah. Strike that.
Strike the motion.
Item eleven, executive session for a conference of conference, may save returning for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two for P, legal liability avoidance and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation. The valuing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two for E, property purchases. Motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call roll please.
Debono.
Yes.
Criago.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Okay, we'll take a short recess to get time for.